Did we know if he's good?
I haven't heard.
I don't know if Dolan just got married, I wonder if he's good.
He's coming.
I didn't know if he's out of town.
Thank you, he's coming.
Thomas there.
All right, we'll call the March Town of Bowling Springs Council Meeting to order. First item is adoption of the agenda. What's the council's pleasure on adopting the agenda?
Move the agenda be adopted?
Councilman Green with the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Gant with the second. Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, council can record their yays and nays electronically. And the agenda is adopted, are there anyone, is there anyone present that would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Six items in the consent agenda this evening. Any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Thomas with that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I think that was.
That was good.
All right, Councilman Edwards with the second, is any further discussion? All right, you can cast your vote. All right, consent agenda is adopted. Mr. Evans with the Gardner Web update.
Good evening, everyone, it's nice to be here and it's still light outside, so thank you for the opportunity again. Lot going on, just a couple of quick bullet points here, you may have heard our women's basketball team did something amazing, twenty-one and oh. First time in history that it's in Gardner Web and Big South history that it's gone that long, first place in the tournament this past weekend, they won on Sunday night, which clinched the auto bid into the NCAAs, March Madness, the whole nine yards there. So we will find out Sunday evening, open to the public, we're gonna do a selection show at Tucker, it will start at nine o'clock, we'll have refreshments in the works there for that, so we invite everybody, the community especially, to come out and rally around these young ladies who have achieved something great. We all have our metaphorical bets on the table of where are we going, who are we playing, what's next, we've heard things as far as Utah to Virginia Tech to Duke to Columbia, we're obviously hoping for something that we can travel to easily and, but the girls are ready to play anybody, so I just want to celebrate them for a second. It's not Selection Sunday, but our wrestling team has Selection Wednesday tomorrow where they'll find out, we have two wrestlers actually going to NCAAs, I believe that's in Oklahoma this year, so that will not be local. That's also open to the public to come out and celebrate their success, staying in the sport vein, baseball, softball, it's perfect weather for it, they've got games all weekend. We do have a new landmark coming to campus on Monday, the thirteenth, you'll see it in some of the news, we have a new statue coming to the outside part of LYCC, if you've ever been to a game there, we're upgrading that area and trying to create a more inviting area for fans, photogenic opportunities, if you will, things like that, and then, no surprise here, this is on the agenda, web stock, we were pushing that any and every time we can, kind of preaching to the choir, bringing that to this meeting, but another great opportunity coming up for the community, we wanted to remind folks of. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitch with the YMCA update?
Thank you for having me. We've got a lot going on at the Y, right now, we have a hundred and twenty, excuse me, a thousand and twenty-five memberships, which brings us three thousand and six members. Bowling Springs Town residents that has a discount right now is eighty-two units and a hundred and ninety-four members. Now, once again, that doesn't count the ones that, that has discounts like they were or whatever. So we had exciting weekend this past weekend, we had our basketball championship at Gardner Web, and Ruby actually brought home four trophies, the nine-ten boys, ten-twelve girls, thirteen-fifteen boys, and the sixteen-eighteen boys, so we're, we've got some trophies that we get to put out and brag about. We also hosted indoor soccer for Pinnacle Classical Academy, they just needed somewhere to have their games, so we, we gave them our facility for that, and right now, spring sports, you can tell, you've probably noticed people down at the ball fields getting it ready, right now, we've got a hundred and ten registered for baseball and a hundred and seven for soccer, so we've still got late registration going on, though. And then, we're offering a basketball clinic, April, April through May, and we're also offering adult basketball this summer, then we're gonna start some new programs, dodgeball tournament and spike ball tournament. And then, I've actually got y'all a copy of this, so, and I've got Jordan Fry called, he is our Ruby Sports Director, I mean Coordinator, so if you ever need, have any questions or need him for anything, I've got his information here. In the library, at the first of the year, we, we switched up a little bit, Jasmine Bullard is now over the library, she's our Senior Programs Director, so she's gonna be responsible for new programs and activities in the library. We're looking into restoring our story walk that got vandalized here at the park, it's a little expensive, so we gotta figure out how we're gonna do this. Then, I'm not gonna go through all this, because I've left this here with you, but we've got a lot of things that's going on at the library. In our family department, we have a hundred and three registered for after school, so we had to get creative and try to find a place to, to put a hundred and three kids when school's out, but, but it's, it's all working good and we, we'll make room for more. Our A2I reading program, we're continuing with it, and it's been proven very successful, the children that's in the program has, has been able to get up to their, their level in school in their reading, we started it because, you know, after COVID, you know, the kids seemed to be a little bit behind, so we're continuing that. Now, we're gearing up for the, the pool to open, we've got some cleaning up to do, and then we've got also a little bit of repairs that we wanna do, so we're waiting on Caribbean Pool for that. We've set aside two days again for the town residents to come to the pool at no cost, we're gonna let them help us open Memorial Day weekend and then close Labor Day weekend, so they'll be able to come to that. And we've already started booking parties, we've got the schools booked for their end of the year parties, and we've also got private parties that's already booking as well, so. And now, one thing that we have new is behavioral health, we've got Dr. Karen Williams, that she's, actually works for the Y now, and she's offering behavioral, behavioral services at all our locations, she does have a office here at Ruby, but we just don't know the dates and times right now that she'll be able to, to come to Ruby, but if anybody needs her services, they can go to Dover right now, and it's not just for members or staff, it's available to anybody in the community. We've got a new food program starting, so right now, we're actively working on our certification to be able to purchase food and distribute food in our community. One thing that I would, would ask, no one knows our needs in our community better than y'all do, so if, if I could get some of y'all to be on our committee so we can see what our food distribution will look like for our community. We, it might be a pop-up grocery store in the Y for people just to come in and get free food, or it might be that we deliver, it's just whatever the needs are in our community, but we're excited about that. But that's all I have right now, do y'all have any questions for me?
Who's the food service tied with, who, who do you interact with?
It's, it's the state, yeah, it's, it's with the state, so we went to Greensboro, North Carolina, and went to a Y there, and what they did was, they, and we actually got to help them with it, it was really cool, we bagged up groceries, like, in that community, there's a lot of transient people, so we actually went to hotels and, and gave food, just delivered it door to door. Like I say, I know that our community, that wouldn't be the need, but there is a need for food in our community, so maybe we can either deliver it to homes or just have them to come to the Y and pick it up, so, but we're real excited about it, it's just taken a while to get all the, the paperwork done for the state, so, but as soon as we get that done, we'll, we're excited to be able to offer this.
So that's gonna be a program that's gonna be free?
It's free.
To the community, it's not gonna be something set up in the Y?
No.
For people that, you know, are hungry or wanting to come get a salad after working out?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, just, if we set up a pop-up grocery store, they can just come and get what items that they want, free. But it, it's sort of like what the Lions Club used to do in our community, but we had to, we had to give that up, so I'm excited to know that we can step up and do something. But like the, the other Y, the ones that went to the hotels, they, they just made sure they did just food like cereals and meal bread, things that, that you really wouldn't have to cook, but you could stick in a microwave, so it's just, it's just according to, to what the need is in, in the areas, and we'll be serving at all our associations, so, I mean, all our branches in our association, so King's Mountain will look different than Ruby, Shelby will look, look different, you know, we're just trying to meet the needs.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I say, we would appreciate your advice, but I'm gonna leave these here for you.
I've got one other question, so refresh my memory on what the story walk is at the park.
Okay, over here at the park, there, I think it's right at, oh, what's that, it's like a little, maybe a food bank or something that y'all got? Yeah, right there, it starts, and you could walk around the, the little area there at the park and read a different page of a story or two pages of a story at each, at each stop.
So it was vandalized, somebody tore down the signs or something?
Yeah, they, they, I did, I really didn't get to look at it, but I think they just
It was picture frames, and they basically just beat it with a ball bat or something.
Yeah, yeah, so when we replace it, we wanna replace it with something that's a little better than, yeah, more durable, because it.
Hate to use that term, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The four-by-four poles are still there, they just basically knocked the picture frames out.
Okay, yeah, thanks, sorry about that, I just couldn't, couldn't pull it up my mind.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, update from the Foothills Regional Planning Commission, Ms. Stansberry?
Well, thank y'all for having us to start with. You got it? Thank you, I appreciate you letting me come and talk to you all tonight about what we do at Foothills Regional Commission, I'm not sure the last time someone was here from the commission to talk about all we do, so it's an honor, I started at Foothills in July, and I've been trying to get out to all my communities to do this, so thank you. I just wanna start with a little history on, oh, there we go, on what councils of government are, we've left a little flyer up there, and that's a, just a snapshot of the whole presentation, basically, the last slide I get to, I'm gonna introduce Eric Community Economic Development Director, so he can go over programs that mostly relate to what you guys are doing in Bowling Springs right now, so, let's see, our region is Polk, Rutherford, McDowell, Cleveland County, and we are made up of all the local governments in those four counties. Pointing the wrong, there we go, that's our little region right there, one of our board members terms that the GOAT, because it looks like a goat, and I like that term, because I feel like it is the GOAT, the greatest of all time, so I feel like it's very applicable, but there are sixteen regions in the state, and all of those regions provide aging services and transportation planning, but then we all kind of branch off and do different things, some are duplicative, some are not, we want Justin and his staff to view our staff as just an extension of his, of his staff, so if there's things that we can do that's financially easier on the budget, that's what we do, we have our own staff and, and you have to provide the same benefits that y'all provide, so if there's something that we're already doing and they can tag on to it, it just makes sense. Our core partners are, of course, the state of North Carolina, HUD, Appalachian Regional Commission, Economic Development Administration, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the National Association of County Associations, and the National Association of Development Organizations, as well as the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the North Carolina City and County Managers Association. Regional councils in this state are a result of legislation passed in nineteen sixty-nine that called for closer cooperation between federal programs and state and local governments. We provide a wide variety of programs, I'll go over those in just a minute, but I think one of the most important things we do is we, we can provide provision of current information on state and federal programs, just because we're in constant contact with a lot of these federal lawmakers and all of our elected officials, we are able to analyze the trends and advise our member governments on program changes and the availability of funding or programs that are important to citizens of this region, so let's see. So there's, there's a big, a bigger map. So here are all our departments, and I've got some slides after this that I'm not gonna go through, just because it goes into further detail of what it is we do at Foothills Regional Commission, but we do offer these programs and services to all four counties and all the municipalities in those, so we house the Area Agency on Aging, I know Cleveland County has, from my understanding, the best senior centers in our region, if not the state, and so we work with those to provide programs, nutrition through those sites, we house the Workforce Development Board for the region, so we have to stay up to date on the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, which is a federal program, it's how we get a lot of our funding for that. Economic and Community Development, which Alan will go into later and talk about some of the projects we're working on for Bowling Springs right now, and then we also provide Section Eight housing for our four counties, and Cleveland, Cleveland is obviously the most populous county, so there's more Section Eight vouchers that we give out here and work with more landlords and tenants here than in any other county that we have. So the things that's probably most important on these slides is if you have questions, who to get in contact with, and that's, you can start with me, obviously, and I can direct you to those people, so Laura Lynch, she's been there at the commission for a very long time, you may know her already, David Lee's our Workforce Development Director, Pam Hall's our Housing Program Director, and then Alan, who I'm going to introduce now, if you'd like to come up and talk about his department, because he really has more of an impact, I think, than the rest of them do, just for the Town of Bowling Springs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, board members, thanks for having us tonight, thanks for letting me talk a little bit, so we provide a lot of services in the Community and Economic Development Department, and when Dana says we really are an extension of your local government, I think Justin can testify to that, we, we really are, anytime Justin has issues, maybe he needs a waterline project, downtown Wi-Fi, you know, we assisted Justin with the ARC application on downtown Wi-Fi, we do the Planning and Zoning Administration for the, for the town, who knows what else, I know we talked about parks and all kinds of other stuff, but we provide, usually when a local government comes to me and says, Alan, we need you to do X, Y, and Z, we try to find a way to do, to meet that need, and that list here shows a pretty good idea. We are the lead economic development district for both the Appalachian Regional Commission, which Cleveland County was added as part of the bipartisan infrastructure bill, that's a great funding source to leverage for not only city projects, but economic development projects, nonprofit projects, to give you a kind of a range of those projects ARC can look like, we're doing downtown Wi-Fi with, with Justin, but we're also doing ARC funding with Cleveland Community College to kind of fill up their workforce, to redo some of their workforce buildings for their plumbing and broadcaster program, we're also working on an ARC application in Old Fort, up in Marion and McDowell County for a sewer line extension, we're doing a, we're on the very early stages on a transitional housing project up there for ARC, so we use ARC for a wide range of things, it's a great resource to tap into, it's the same way with the Economic Development Association, that's usually bigger pots of money, think two million dollar-ish, but we use that for a wide range of things, so King's Mountain is using that currently for a waterline project, we help administer that, McDowell Tech is another one of those projects going on, and it's for community colleges, that's a wide range of things just in those two programs right there, and then we get into it a little bit more, right, so we talked about the zoning administration, so that's one thing we do here specifically at Bowling Springs, a couple of other municipalities as well, but, you know, somebody pulls a permit, it gets sent to Foothills for review, and my staff reviews it. We also have the HUD Home Consortium, that's not something Bowling Springs is a member of, that helps provide affordable housing in the region. Finally, one thing we have started getting into is agriculture services, farmland preservation, not something super relevant to Bowling Springs, but super relevant to Cleveland County, so we do some long-range planning on farmland preservation in the region, so those are just a couple of the things we do in Community and Economic Development, we've added to this since then with some grant writing and administration, but usually my answer when Justin calls me and says, hey, can you help us figure out a way to do this thing, my answer is usually yes, and we try to find a way to meet those needs in the region, because they are varied, they are wide, I mean, just Bowling Springs need is radically different than Cleveland County's need, which is radically different than King's Mountain's need, so we try to work to meet those needs, so you guys have my information, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have about community and economic development, and I'm all, I want you to know, Foothills is always here to assist Bowling Springs in whatever projects you may have, and I think that's it. Yep, thank you for your time, thank you for your time this evening.
Question, why, why are we not a member of the HUD program?
I can't remember, that started before.
I think one of our needs is coming quickly is affordable housing, I'm just curious, I mean.
I know that was started before both Justin and I were, Justin was at Bowling Springs before I was at Foothills, and before Dana was at Foothills, we're all new, but that is most certainly something we can reassess to add Bowling Springs to the HUD Home Consortium in the region and how to navigate that, that is most certainly something we can do.
One of the reasons I wanted to have them come was because we have that retreat coming up, so this will be a good topic for us to discuss there, but yeah, I agree, I don't know if it's been discussed before, but back up again.
Not since I've been on, I do think it's something like affordable housing is
Yeah, I mean, we
that they need in, in our area.
Yeah, we have a housing crisis in the region by all measurable standards, and yeah, that is something we are working towards, is how can we address some of this housing affordability crisis that's going on, so, any other questions?
Are you guys gonna be available for like the, the meeting we're having, March eighteenth?
Yeah, March eighteenth, I don't think that I've talked to y'all about coming to that meeting specifically, but I think some ideas would come out of that meeting and we could have them, have them back.
I didn't know if it'd be important to have them along with us during that same time period, or if we wanted them to work on something now, like I said, affordable housing is a huge issue, but, but we have talked about community development, community development, community, getting businesses in here, and I think that's gonna be a big focus of the strategic meeting, so, just an idea.
Yeah, and one thing I'll tell you too, we're always happy to come back, we're happy to come back outside this meeting, you know, maybe we do it, you know, as a working meeting or something similar, but we're always happy to come back and talk with y'all about whatever topic, whether it's community development or affordable housing issues, we're always happy to do that.
Any of our leadership teams happy to come, speak to any of the departments, the programs they've got going on their department, how, how it works with yours and y'all?
And Justin's not shy about calling me, I promise, but I'm not shy about calling him either, so it's a little bit of a two-way street.
You appear to be very shy.
Oh, I, I know, can't you tell? Yeah, real reserved, you know, me, but thank you again for your time tonight, and hope y'all have a great week.
Thank you, sir, thank you both for your engagement, you do excellent work. All right, council, we have a few discussion items, the first one on the list is the electric vehicle charging station policy, EV, looking for a little bit of guidance about how to proceed as those are imminent to be installed.
Imminent's a good word, if you go through those double doors over there, they're all in boxes, so check them, check them out on your way out, but yeah, the Public Works crews have been making plans to, to get those installed, so just kind of wanted to iron out some of the details that we've sort of briefly mentioned in passing before, one of those being the, the charge of the, the charging stations, we can set a, well, we can set any rate we want to, we can charge, you know, a thousand dollars per, you know, per minute or whatever, but there's a, there's a way to go into the dashboard and set a, sort of a recommended rate for your area, you put in the, the zip code and, and ChargePoint does some calculations, and they recommend a rate per kilowatt hour of what that should be, I've got an example in your packets there, we can add on an additional fee for, it's basically an overstay fee, so we could put up signage that says, you know, parking for one hour, if anybody stays beyond that, like if somebody wanted to just try and leave their car plugged in all day, they'd incur an additional, you know, five or ten dollar fee per, per hour beyond that first hour, but really just wanted to get some feedback from you all on, on what we wanted to do there, I got the sense that we wanted to charge something, there are a lot of places that, that do it for free, it's, it's fairly economical, but wanted to, us to have that conversation.
Refreshing my memory, what was the example of the fee with our area code?
So the one I put in the other day was, it was recommended at ten cents per kilowatt hour, and it's basically two dollars and eighty-two cents for about twenty-five miles of range, or per hour, it's, it's twenty-five miles in an hour, so for an hour charging it'd be two eighty-two.
What, what if someone who doesn't have an electric, electric vehicle that needs charging parks in the spot?
So that, we were planning to put markers on the asphalt like you'd see in a handicap spot, and my thought was we'll have four spots initially for all the, the charging courts, but let's mark two of them and see what the usage looks like, and if we've got a bunch of EV people that are coming in and trying to charge and can't use them, then we'll mark the other ones and then we'll start actually enforcing it a lot harder, but initially, I don't want to take away too many spots from businesses downtown without knowing kind of what the usage was gonna be.
I park there every morning.
It's a white pickup truck.
I'm, 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 I think it's a good thing, I'm, I'm just curious, because a lot of people may, may not even be aware of what this charging station is, you know?
And we can put up additional signage, too, at the stations that, that say EV charger parking only, but was kind of wanting to, to feel it out for us for a little while, and we'll be able to get feedback through the ChargePoint system for people that come and try and park, so they'll let us know pretty quick if, you know, their spots are blocked or there's an issue.
Have, have we had an idea which spots we're gonna be targeting?
It'd be four behind the Greenway office, so next to the, next to the cemetery, behind the Greenway office, I think there's four and then one handicap spot there.
Between the Greenway and the office and the Pellic.
Yes.
Another question, do we have any idea what the, it's gonna cost us, if, like if we're gonna do it for free, there will be a cost to us, right?
So that, that calculation that I Yes, sir, yeah, that, when I, when I put it into ChargePoint to give us that recommended level, that should be enough to cover what the costs are, so that's a, that's just like the minimal, minimal amount to cover the cost.
Of course, I wouldn't see, we'd wanna use it as a revenue stream or anything, just convenience more than anything else, but I do think, somebody who just parks their car and goes to the Gardner Web and stays But I do think somebody who just parks their car and goes to the garden web and stays all day.
Yeah.
Should be, it should be some penalty for staying there when you're no longer.
For sure.
Or say I can park there, charge my car and stay all day.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. So I do think there should be a penalty when you're, when you stay too long. What that is, I, I don't know.
Is this a situation with charge point where as the technology advances, they can up, upgrade from a level two to? Are, are we going to be in that situation where it doesn't take an hour just to get you 25 miles? Because surely that technology will advance.
It it, it might. I know for the, the current setup, so if you wanted a faster charger, it would need to be a D C fast charger. And that would require different like infrastructure to the actual circuit box. So I don't think in this specific spot, it's gonna, it's gonna advance. If that's your question.
They're very expensive too.
Yeah.
Compared to level two. So did you say the system knows if somebody parks there that's not an E V?
Uh, no, it, it won't know that. It'll know if you've parked there and left your car plugged in for too long.
Ah, okay.
And we may have to come back with a, an amendment to our parking ordinance to address, you know.
Well, I can just run a cord out my window.
Well, how, how are we going to identify them color-wise? I think Cleveland Community used a lime green on theirs.
Yes, sir. That's
And they stand out pretty well.
Lime green's the pretty much standard color.
Okay.
We found some sensors that are actually similar to the ones that Ingles has. It's a little bit different, but it's, it's a car with like a plug going around it.
See, I, I certainly think it's worth charging our cost. I don't want to stir up anything in the community. As a gas guzzling truck driver, I don't think it's right that we should be paying for other people's mileage.
I've thought, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And we're gonna have to, I mean, that cost just covers the cost. I mean, and we're not trying to make anything, but what about, you know, or is somebody gonna have to push, are we gonna have to have patrolmen come and make sure somebody's not parked there that's not supposed to be parked there? I mean, how, how are we planning on enforcing?
Yeah, somebody will have to be checking that. They're, they're already patrolling the area in front of the snack shop on Main Street there because we have that parking area designated for, for businesses only. So they're already in that area. It shouldn't be an additional.
And but if they find somebody that's not compliant, then they're going to have to take action.
Yeah.
And it's taking time.
And, and to me, the other thing we need to make sure we're monitors how much they're being used because otherwise they're just going to be sitting empty.
Yeah.
What I mean, we're going to be taking a parking place that's not providing, if we see that nobody's using it.
Yeah, because there's not enough parking now as it is really.
That's true.
But is there a way to monitor how often one of those parking spaces are going to be?
Yeah, on the, on the, on the charge point app, we can see how much it's getting used and how often and, you know, have all those statistics. So. That's part of the thinking is to kind of mark two of the spaces and make those designated and then evaluate and see kind of how we're doing. So. You know, we don't, we don't know how much usage we're going to get. I, you know, I hope they're, I hope it brings more people to downtown, pulls people off 74 and it's a, it's a good addition, but we won't know until we've got them up and running.
So are you looking for action? Is this an action item?
Um, yes, sir. It sounds like there might be a small consensus at least to charge for our, a cost. And then do we want to do a fee after like two hours or I kind of tried to think through if I'm getting my, my hair done or if I have a little bit longer lunch, you know, I don't want to penalize somebody that's out there.
Oh, yeah. You gotta give them at least two hours to get your hair done.
What are you talking about?
Why, we get 15 minutes.
Yeah, especially where those parking places are going.
They have a bit electronic vehicle too. That's the person getting their hair done has electronic vehicle.
But there might be a point where somebody travels greater than 25 miles to come to Bulling Springs. And, you know, if, if we start eliminating to two hours, three hours, I mean, are we going to hurt ourselves in the long run?
Sure.
I wouldn't want a car to sit there for five hours and, I mean, what, what would be the point of that? Just taking a parking space and otherwise, so.
Well, they have apps on, people that own these cars have apps. It tells them when it's charged.
Tell them when the car is fully charged.
Yeah, but I'm saying, so it, it gives for one hour charge, it's not going to fully charge that vehicle.
No, sir. That's what you're saying. Yeah, it, it would take, yeah, it would take several hours. It's going to be 25 miles or so an hour. So.
Yeah.
If you were, if you were coming and wanted to stay for a while.
Somebody could park their car there every night and
To get a full charge.
Charge.
Yeah.
Well, will it keep char, it will keep charging?
It will. Yeah.
Well, can we not just keep charging them?
Yeah, we can just set, we can just, um, set the cost of our electricity basically and not do the, the fee on it. And we can, I mean, we can evaluate it in a couple of months. And if we want to add the fee on then, we can, I mean, I've got it pulled up right now. I can set the rate, whatever we want real time and, and change it. So it's, it's very flexible.
We want people to use it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, but if you say, well, you can only use it for an hour, that, that probably is going to detract from what we really wanted it to, to do. So.
But then the other thing is it would be, they're going to have to be in town for eight hours.
Yeah. Hopefully they're, they're spending money charging the car and they're spending money at the snack shop and maybe they go to C V S and, you know.
We gotta do, gotta start somewhere.
Anything else?
So we'll set it at, at our cost and then we'll just evaluate it. Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
All right. The next item is discussing the draft retreat agenda. I think we've heard we could add in the HUD opportunity.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
As well as in, we have Town Commons Plaza Buildings on there that we can kind of rope in Councilman Thomas's idea of recruiting businesses. I think that fits there. Other comments or I'm, I'm sorry, Justin, if you have anything.
No, you're fine. I've just provided some, some ideas that we'll use to start the discussion and the draft agenda is, um, going through it and making small little changes as, as we, as we keep thinking more about it. But really just want to sort of high level, want to provide a, a review of the last year, um, which I think the mayor will do a great job of through his state of the town address. Then we'll kind of check in on the goals that we set last year, where we're at, what we're still working on, and then some ideas we've talked about and some new ideas and prioritize and strategize around all those. And hopefully have a nice new strategic plan for the coming year. So if you have any ideas between now and middle of next week or so, we'll try and send these out, send the packets out for that a few days ahead of time. So you all can review them. But yeah, send me any, any other ideas?
I think it looks good. In the past on these state of the town addresses, have they been public or recorded and shared or?
I, I think this is the inaugural.
That, that is the plan though. We'd like to record it and, and Tommy and I talked a little bit about it. I think council has to stand up and clap like they do at the State of the Union and then it sits back down.
One sided, one sided. Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Stand behind him and tear up our papers and stuff like that.
But yeah, the
What I mentioned to Justin that, that sometime back, the chamber used to sponsor a state of the community breakfast. And they would go around to different communities. They'd come to Bulling Springs and then the mayor of Bulling Springs and Gardner Webb would present, you know, what's going on in their, in their town. So it's one of the things I really want us to, and, and maybe this, in my opinion, what I'm talking about 30 minutes won't cover it because we've got a lot of stuff going on. And I just think what I talked to Justin about was us having a state of the town where here, where, where we invite people to come, but then we record it. And then they can see it whenever they want. And we do it like we do in our meeting, you know, like the, the, all the grant money that we, you know, there's a lot of things going on and we try to keep them informed. But you know, this would just be a
Another communication channel.
Yeah, but another communication channel. And I had mentioned, you know, uh, like there's different, different things going on. And maybe all the town council could participate, you know, like I'm going to present X and you're going to present Y. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on that I think the people in town are, a lot of them are not aware of. And I just think it'd be an opportunity for us to
Really highlight everything.
Let them know what's, what's going on.
That's a good idea.
But that, that was kind of my thought.
All right. So any other ideas? Let Justin know before mid next week.
I, I didn't see any flying time.
Don't worry, I'm going to work that in there.
Maybe snowing by then. All right, Mr. Longinov.
Thank you, sir. Just have a few things I'll cover. We had a productive sewer extension policy meeting. Gosh, last week I think it was. Information that was presented at the meeting is all on our website. If you search sewer extension policy, we've got the PowerPoint up there and some graphics and then draft versions of that policy. So I'm hoping to meet with Mayor Thomas and Mayor Pro Tim Litten this week or next to kind of review some of the feedback we got. And then we can have a discussion of retreat as well and how we want to move forward from here. If we want to have more public meetings or continue to, to get public input. But the first meeting went well. Wanted to tag along with what Mr. Evans said earlier about Webstock and then announce the dates for the Music on Main series. Uh, that's been posted on Facebook, but real quick there, March 30th, May 20th, August 10th, and October 14th. Uh, we did two on Thursday and two on Saturday. Last year we had some feedback that Thursday wasn't good and then Saturday wasn't good. So we tried to mix it up. And we've got almost all of the bands and food booked for all of those. Tracy's been working hard. Ms. Holland's been working hard at getting all of that nailed down. So look for some information on those in the next maybe week, next week. All right. She's making different posters for different events. So those will, those will be coming out. Circling back to Webstock, we've got about 30 vendors overall registered already, 11 food and 20 generals. That's 31 vendors. Um, I think I got those numbers right. So hopefully, hoping we continue to get more vendors in and that it's, um, I think it's already bigger than it was last year. So it's looking good. I've already mentioned that the retreat is on March 18th at the Shelby Airport. We'll be sending out that agenda information next week. We've got our land use plan, our parks and recreation plan, and our safe streets for all plans all, all moving forward. Uh, met with the consultants for the land use and recreation plan last week and should be, should be hearing more from them in the next couple of months. And then we've been having some webinars and different things for the safe streets for all grant to keep that moving forward and lots of federal paperwork to fill out on that one. Speaking of, of grants, we submitted a big raise grant last week. Uh, thank you to Mr. Sontag for his help with that one. We pulled an all-nighter, so to speak, on, on Monday, I think, to get it ready for the Tuesday submittal, but it turned out really well. So I'm, I'm optimistic about it. Tagging along off of that, we've got a, a grant from the League of Municipalities for some gym equipment, which has been installed in our gym. So I have a picture I'll send out in my Friday email. Um, I went in there and I, I felt ripped after two or three minutes. So it's a, it's a great addition. And thank you, Mr. Sontag for applying for that, for that addition. Another picture I was going to send out in my Friday email is a picture of the snowplow that we've got for the front of our truck in Public Works. Um, it is ready to go. I feel certain that it will not snow for 10 years now since we've bought a snowplow. But if it does, we, we are, we are prepared.
If it keeps us from that, we, money well spent.
Hey, absolutely. And I believe that's all that I had. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Gant.
As far as closing.
Yeah, just your final comments.
Oh, I just appreciate Barbara and Nate coming out today and just giving us a brief overview of, with what's going on. And I'm very, very proud of Gardner Webb, base, uh, the basketball girls, awesome job that they done. And Barbara, really appreciate the details that you gave us today and a lot of very interesting stuff. I did not know that was going on at the Y. And I, I really look forward to, um, hoping to be able to participate and, and see what we can do to help, especially with that food drive and get that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
I, I really don't have anything except, um, I'm glad I live in Bulling Springs. I think there's a lot of good things going on here and I've lived here all my life. But I don't know that I've ever seen the involvement, the things that are going on are just, they're exciting. And I'm excited, you know, like the wifi downtown and the strategic plan for the street. And so I'm just proud to be here. And I think, didn't I see where the Y got a sizable donation from Green Heck?
Yes, we did. Yeah. They, they had a fundraiser and brought us a thousand dollars. And they're having another fundraiser and they're going to bring us more. So.
Yeah, good deal.
I thought I was going to have to share it. I was asking them how they wanted us to divvy it up and they said, that's all yours. So.
Awesome.
I appreciate how the town staff and the police, how they, how they go about their jobs every, every day.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Thomas.
Yeah, I echo the same thing that Ms. Gant and Mr. Green said. I'm, I'm super excited about the Gardner Webb girls, ladies rather. And I want to see them go really far into the tournament and win. So I'm really excited about that. I know there was a lot of excitement a couple of years ago when the men were in the tournament. I hope the same type of level of enthusiasm will come out for the community as well. So the, the Y always does a phenomenal job. So thank you guys and thank you to staff. I'm really excited about the retreat because I think that we had a very good vision last year and we're executing upon those things. So, and that's because we have great management here and you guys are really doing a good job. So I hope that we can continue. I'm sort of worried about the interest rates and how that might affect development and that type of stuff moving forward. But we have a solid plan. We have a great board here and I think we've got a good vision for the future. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Litten.
I was glad to see the update from Justin about the lights on the signs. We put a good bit of money in the signs. So we're keeping them operational is, is good. Do we have any update on the potential for new stoplight, monopoles or, or do we plan to apply any of that grant money we just received toward that? Or is that just going into general downtown enhancements?
Good question. So that, that state money that we received will probably go towards survey work to relocate some of the lines at that intersection to make those mast arm poles feasible. Uh, so we had been waiting for Duke Energy to come up with some plans to put some of the lines underground. Um, I'll spare you the details on that, but we came up with a, a new version, which will put some of the lines underground and then reroute some of the other lines, which we think will be more cost effective. And maybe be a little bit quicker as well. So we are going to have to do some survey work up into North Main Street, whereas before it was kind of from the light down to East Branch. But we'll use most of those state funds to do that survey work to hopefully reroute those power lines. Well, I won't, I won't say where they're going to go yet because it's not definitive, but that's the plan for now. Yes, sir. And the state still has that money for the, the traffic light. That's not going anywhere. So we've got that kind of waiting on us to get our plan straight.
Okay, good. Thank you for that update. Uh, and we surplus those two vehicles, but do we still have a Tahoe over at Miller's and what are we planning to do with that?
I think we do. I think that is the one that needs a new engine. So we have been trying to evaluate what's the best path forward in terms of cost. And in terms of what enterprise is going to be able to get for us. Uh, I think we have one that's still on the way. So if we get that one in, we'll have enough vehicles. And I'd rather try and wait till we can get another one from enterprise versus throwing all of our money into that one.
Okay. And where, where did we end up with the count on YouTube viewers? Did we ever get to the 50?
We're at 17.
17. Okay. We'll have to push that a little more.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Edwards.
Yes, I would just like to follow up on the solicitor ordinance language correction. I didn't know if you had any updates or if we can bring them at the next meeting or?
I mean, I think, you know, I don't know if we've talked again, but I mean, the thing is adding the comma, right? Which I know you've talked about before. So, you know, I don't actually, how do you, uh, if we can bring it as an amendment or we can, can do that.
Yeah, I think we were planning to do that just administratively, just add that comma in there.
Perfect.
Codify it that way. Yeah.
And the, it will be for the others.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Um, looking forward to Webstock and hopefully, you know, the schedule and the family schedule aligns this year. Missed a couple last year, unfortunately. And looking forward to the retreat. I remember last year's was very productive, uh, great team building discussion. And we had, created some great visions. So I'm really looking to, looking forward to this year's as well. So that, thank you.
Whoever's in charge of the weather, I hope it's not the same person who was in charge of it last year. Could we get somebody else on that?
Yes, sir.
For Webstock.
Reassign that.
He was wintered.
Oh, yeah. It was, it was sleeting. I had it written down to, that it was going to be 75 and sunny.
Yeah.
You got it?
Mayor's in charge.
We got, we got that.
Mayor's, mayor's got that. Don't need to worry about it. Mayor's got it.
Well, we do have a snowplow, right, and just in, just in case. Thank you. Thank you, council. You're talented. You're forward-looking. It really is a pleasure. Thank you to the staff. You do your job with excellence and professionalism day in and day out. The partnerships make us better. Appreciate the partnerships with the Y, Gardner Web, foothills regional, and the citizens that come out. It's a great place to live. And with that, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All right, see y'all in April. Well, see you next, next weekend. Well, my daughter is planning to go to Hot Springs on Sunday because it is supposed to snow there.
Well, I'm going to Lindell Falls. My granddaughter's getting married Saturday. I don't know why she went way up there to find somewhere to get married. She wanted, she wanted to be in the mountains. She wanted to be cold.